I want to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Edmonton School Committee on Tuesday, June 18th. We're here at the Edmonton Middle High School Library and this is being recorded on Edmonton Cam. First, I'd like to call me in order and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First item, hearing of visitors. Anybody like to speak about anything on tonight's agenda before we get started? Okay, seeing nobody. First set, reading and approval of records. The first set of minutes is from our regular May meeting on May 21st. If you get a chance to look it over, I'll be looking for a motion to approve or not.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second set is from the meeting we had right before town meeting, the day before, on May 20th. Same thing, once you have a chance to look that over, a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Moving along, principals reports. Ms. Laura Monachino is here from the early education program. Did you want to flex the lights? Is she using anything or no?
Yeah, I can do the lights. Good thought.
So I'm really excited to share this video with you. We've taken the day in the light bulb and it's all about the kids at the ADEP. And before I show it, I just want to extend a tremendous amount of thanks to Pam Neely, who is the one that put this together for us. She did so last year and she's really outdone herself. So please enjoy. So I sort of feel I don't have anything left. It's such a fabulous job with that, but Peter wouldn't like me much if I didn't address this for a minute. So I will go ahead and do that as well. And I just need to figure out how to get this kind of technology out of the way. I'm just going to try and impress Mr. Bicowski. We're just going to go slow and go over.
That's fine.
I did not print this. Rich, I'll have you know, I did not print this. It was over there. So I'm just going to hit on some of the highlights from this year and the school improvement plan. A lot of it wasn't that covered as that. You can see that we've made a lot of linkages with the community. We made linkages with the high school. We've been able to use to share the space. I think probably one of the most exciting things that we've done with the high school this year is Karen Daisy's human growth and development class has actually stepped up a notch. We have a phase two or around two, which is an internship held with preschool. And the students that partake in that, it's an honors level course, and they come to the preschool every single day during that period and work in the classroom. And they're called upon to be involved in the class, do some lesson planning, and it culminates in a capstone project. And they receive a grade for that. It's just been spectacular. The kids were thrilled to have the high schoolers. The high schoolers were thrilled to be there with the kids. A lot of them are expressing interest in potentially going on to become early education educators. So really exciting stuff there. We're moving in the realm of social emotional learning in quite a few ways. We've recently purchased the Second Step Program and we're going to be implementing that next year fully. In the meantime, we've kind of been dabbling in social emotional learning. We've had teachers run activities and lessons in the classroom. And one of the highlights for me was seeing the little ones doing yoga. And they were doing mindfulness activities. And they've also been doing some work on reflective thinking about the way that they interact with peers. So big steps for little people. Trying to think what other areas I need to cover since I am off book this night. Oh, strengthening parent and community involvement engagement has also been a really big focus this year. We set up a table and we have a display rack where we have brochures and postings and resources for parents and guardians to access. We also have a bulletin board that tells us the programs that are going on that are more of a social nature. This year with every of the newsletters that go home as part of the program, we purchased something called an early years subscription and a copy of that goes home with the monthly newsletter. As well as we have staff members that are pulling together articles or even writing things themselves to send home that might be of interest to the families. So by way of example, Sue Keaty sent something in on why children aren't developing their fine motor skills as well as they used to. So things like that are really stepping up our involvement with the community. And you saw that we had some community groups come in. And we continue to do some volunteer types of work. Karen was giving that. We sent cards to the community or to the senior center, excuse me, on Thanksgiving and Valentine's Day. We did Pennsboro Patients Drive and we did a food drive. And then we've had some seniors come visit us during the send-off at the end of the year. So that's pretty much the highlights of the year. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
I thought the video was phenomenal. I think to your point, I think it sums up a lot. And I love seeing the community partnerships. I think in the whole idea, I think with placing the pre-K in this building was to be able to utilize, was to have that early, those students that were interested in early education in the high school age be able to come and help. So I think that's fantastic.
Yeah. And I, again, I shout out to Pam because it was phenomenal. And she actually did a different version in our send-off a couple of weeks ago. And the pink song in the pictures, there was not a eye on her staff. I do have parents as well. So really moving. And then just to get into the school improvement plan for next year, a lot of it, we're just looking to continue building on the good work that I feel that we've been doing. But the one that I'd like to focus on is Goal Five, which is to identify problematic needs in response to increasing number of students with identified needs and increasing support services required by many students. That is a fancy way of saying we have a lot of kids coming to us and they're coming to us with very extensive needs. And this was a year of growth. Last year, mid-year, we opened an extra integrated preschool classroom. This year, back in March, we opened a second sub-separate classroom. And next year, one of the integrated classrooms is going to become more of a partial inclusion model to meet these changing needs, the increasing needs of these children coming our way. And because we see this happening and we're not entirely certain that it's a bubble and it could be something that's ongoing, we set that forth as a goal to work with upper-level administration, the community, early intervention and so forth to address those needs and be as proactive as we can in getting the needs of our needs once met.
Well, I had the, I was lucky enough to work with Laura, come to the school council meetings. And it was great just working with you and seeing Pam too. She's exceptional, like you said. She really has her heart and soul in what she does. And just great things are happening over there at the preschool. And yeah, I think you're doing an awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. I should have said a thank you to all the members of the council. So Lisa was there as a representative. We had Pam Neely. We had Harley Mnessis as a community member. We had Sue Keaty, speech and language therapist. And we have, so it was a busy group. We did a lot of work and I truly appreciate all of your input and support this year, Lisa. Thanks.
Laura, I had one thing. Just more of a clear, I guess, I make, I can probably figure out what it is. But in Goal Three, read only one you. Just describe, is it a?
Oh, absolutely. It is an adorable little book about a fish finding his way in the community and how you can be an individual yourself and still be part of the group. And so we had the teachers read this adorable book to their class. And then each of the students in the class decorated their own fish. So that fish is them and then we're posting it. It's going to be up in our vestibule at the beginning of next year as our school individuals.
Great, great. Anybody? Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, everybody.
Up next, Mr. McCurran with Edmonton Middle School.
No cute videos. Thank you, Miss. I believe you all have a copy of my school improvement plan that I presented tonight. I'd like to start just by thanking the members of the school council that helped to develop that. That's Mrs. Lippert, Mrs. Tomlin, Mrs. Deembro, Mrs. Tenori, Mrs. Bailey, and Wendy. Apple was a big help as our school committee liaison at those meetings as well. So thank you, Wendy.
Thanks for having me.
So I just want to take a minute and just address a couple of the bigger items that we kind of bit off this year. And those included implementing a one-to-one computing environment, grade seven through eight. But thanks to the help of Mr. Bicowski and Mrs. Graham and the willingness of the staff to really try new things, has gone very well for us. We implemented co-teaching in grade five and are expanding that to grade six in the coming year. And provided co-teaching PD to staff members in grade five through eight. We also created a tier-two slash three SEL program. And that was probably the largest piece that we kind of jumped on this year. Recognized the need for that early on in the year. I think a few of you that have the opportunity to walk through and kind of see what that developed into. Really started with the discussion in my office with a group of people who were saying, we have a group of five or so students who need something different. And what we are offering for them is not working. And the discipline they're countering is starting to impede their progress academically and socially. And we needed to look differently at how we approached those difficulties that they were having. We had a staff member, Mr. Bobby Kippenham, I should call him Robert Kippenham, who worked with the Check and Connect Program and worked with a few of those kids who check and connect. Also bringing in the one-to-one computing program. We found ourselves with less and less use of the computer lab in the middle schools. So we're able to use that space and really build from there a place where those kids could access supports, including counseling supports, supports for special education staff, general education supports, and become more successful. That has developed over the course of the school year to the point where we're still building it. James and I were talking earlier about a couple of days to sit down in the summer and talk about how we want to come in next year and then continue to build on it. So those are some large pieces that we picked off this year. The highlights from the new school improvement plan that I'd like to address. We want to continue to grow our understanding of SEL, investigate tier-one options. Professional development was held this year with Dr. Jerry Goldberg. We have presentations about game problems along with therapy. We had professional development planned for next year with Jessica Minahan. And we want to investigate some of those brand named items like Second Step, mindfulness, and see which of those we can build in. We want to continue to strengthen and expand our co-teaching practices. We want to investigate options for scheduled intervention periods within the five days schedule. Again, that's an investigation. There'll be a team form to look at how we can do that. We need to take into account all of our shared specialists and also the impact that any kind of period that we put in would have on those classes that are already run. We'd like to increase teaming grades five through six. And this is a big one. And I can't thank the staff enough here. These are grade five, six teachers behind me who came out. Many of them took part in a group that traveled to other middle schools and other towns that have traditional elementary grades within them that have this practice and have nothing but positive things to report. And we'd like to implement that this year and of course, track it as we go. Those are the big items that I wanted to pull out. If you have any questions.
Matt, I had one. It's probably a difference, it's probably combined, last year's goals, this year's goals, next year's goals. And it's about the co-teaching. How do you think it went? How do you feel the implementation of it went in grade five?
Sure. So, you know, before we implement, we looked at what to expect. And having not co-taught myself, my experience, I went to a two-day, 12-hour intensive workshop at MSSAA so that I could build my own knowledge of that. It's a three- to five-year implementation before you're, the people who are doing it feel as though they're walking out every day doing it 100% correctly. Given that, I think we did very well. I can't say enough about Mrs. Tucat, who's in the back row there, who was one of our volunteers to help implement that this year. James worked with us and helped line up some PD. And we were able to provide professional development for five through eight. Because along with implementing co-teaching in five and six, where it had not existed, people would want to make sure we look to strengthen the practices that are already in place at grade seven and eight.
Great, thank you.
I had a question and a comment. Hi. The student leadership piece for Goal Two, I feel like that's very evident even in the, as young as fifth grade. It's just been a really positive experience to hear, you know, my daughter and her group, that's that fifth grade cohort, to just kind of talk about the different ways that they feel, even as the youngest population, that they have some leadership opportunities. So it's nice to see you guys finding ways to include even the youngest of your building. Just a question about Goal One. I'm interested in the data teams. So the indicators of accomplishments. We've had this conversation before, not specific to the middle school, but the committee will probably remember my questions regarding assessments. It says existing assessments modified and additional assessments developed. Can you talk a little bit about what that, what that looked like at the middle school?
Sure. I think it looks a little bit different in every grade level and every subject area. So when you look at grades seven and eight, the department has worked with the staff there during professional development days to do that. When you look at grades five and six, there's a lot of work done during their common planning time to look at the upcoming assessments that they have and looking at where they are, where they want to be and what pieces they want to include and make sure they either add or subtract from.
Yeah, I only bring it up and I keep hammering the same point. Sherry will attest to this. But and Mr. Pease, who, you know, had, had some of the assessments that I sent back that said that I couldn't answer the questions in the wonders assessments. So I think that, as I love the word modified, like to take the existing assessments and be willing to modify a manufactured curriculum that comes, especially if adults are struggling to figure out which is the correct answer, A through D. That skews our data when we look at how students perform because, so I just think that that work is going to be really important as we look at how students do, and I guess I'm speaking specific to ELA, that we have to be careful because I don't know how often, and maybe anybody can speak to this, but how often our middle school teachers have a chance to delete or just say, we're going to give wonders unit two assessment again, but this year we're not going to even count question four because none of us, the answer was really vague. It could have been two choices.
Sure. Now I can answer that from the building leadership perspective. They have that option of doing that. You know, if you go back 10 years, when I first started in the principalship and coming out of a grade five classroom, we talked about implementing these programs with fidelity because they're resource-based and you never fear from them.
Yeah.
And then you have to.
Yeah.
Maybe the old everyday math. We have to fear from the Scott Forceman reading program that I talked about, Spirituality. We have to fear away from them. I think it's harder to do that when a program is very new.
Yeah.
And as you begin implementing year two, year three of the program, you just have to learn it a little more and can move on to more willingly during that.
Yeah. And in fairness to the teachers, like, you know, they went to Plymouth, I know, to see workshop teaching. And we have a purchase program that doesn't actually match what, what it is, the shifts that would like to see us make. So that's another place where modification is going to really have to, and maybe even abandonment in pieces of what we're doing with wonders, what wonders offers us, if our vision is to shift towards more student-centered, less paperwork, less, you know, producing of worksheets that come with a purchase program. So I know that's something we're all thinking about K to eight or six, K to six, K to five, maybe?
K to five.
K to five. So it just was interesting that it showed up here and I just had a question about that assessment piece because it keeps coming up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
I do. So I just want to say that it's been a pleasure to be on the liaison for the middle school. And I know the last time we were together, you spoke about maybe getting a couple of teachers behind you regarding the, the teaming piece. So it's really awesome to see so many of you here. So I'm imagining that you guys are all behind the teaming piece. That's why you're here, right? Is there anybody that's not? Speak now.
The idea of the teaming them.
Awesome.
You know, when we started planning the middle school.
Yeah.
This is way back. I was principal at the Woodsdale. And they really talked about, you know, seventh and eighth is so different. It's kids move all the time.
Right.
And five and six are very different and they should be. You know, a fifth grade and eighth grade classroom shouldn't look the same. But wanting to look at other places where they have a model in place that services students five through eight or six through eight. And over the course of the year, last year, some of that was done and they came to me, both the fifth and sixth grade independently, which is, was interesting. I mean, I'm sure they talked, yeah, I'm telling you about the possibility of teaming and kind of increasing. And really, they team now. They share students for science and social studies. And we're talking about including one more subject and kids won't have any more than two teachers. But it allows the teachers to sort of specialize. And we had to be very careful in our discussions of this about making sure that we were staying within what's allowable by teacher certifications, which is difficult. Because I, you know, some of the places we went to, they were grandfathered in, they called it housed in. So some of those teachers carry a specialist certification, one through six, but only teach one subject area, which is not allowable for current. I still don't understand how it's allowable for them. That's why I'm not saying the name. And then there are other places that just do it and hope that it doesn't come back. But we want to make sure we do it correctly. And I will tell you that the odd number of classrooms was a piece to get around. And I want to make sure that I address that. Because when you work with an odd number and you're talking about teams of two, what happens? So, you know, we had a couple of persistent educators who kept working the problem, as did I, separately and were able to make sure that every student experiences teaming.
Oh, good. So you're not going to have one classroom that's going to be off on its own? That's excellent to hear. Good.
That's why they're all here. They're so, they're very enthusiastic as well. They want to make sure they, you knew how supportive they were of this.
I think it's a great thing. And in fourth grade, that's, they switch off, I think, between science and social studies. And so, you know, I mean, they're kind of used to it anyway. And I think that's, you know, a great start to move up to seventh and eighth where they'll be switching a lot, so.
So I have a question just to clarify. So this year, the teaming was different because it was five, there was five teachers? Is that what you're saying?
There were six teachers in grade five. There were seven teachers in grade six. So anytime we've had an odd pairing in the past, and I think this is probably common amongst every grade level that has an odd number of teachers, there was one teacher that taught all four subject areas rather than swapping with somebody else. And when you're only swapping for one subject, that's not very glaring. But if, if three of you had children in grade five, you know, your child had two teachers, your child had two teachers that they saw twice a day and your child had one teacher for the full day, then the experience isn't the same for all the kids. And we want to make sure we can provide as close to the same experience as possible, so.
So next year, that won't be an issue? Was that like, there's not an odd number of classes? It'll be even numbers?
There's an odd number of classes, but we've worked, we've found a way to work around it where there might be a teacher that teaches three groups, but the students will only experience two teachers.
Okay.
So it's, there's a chart on my.
I think that's great. I mean, I mean personally, I think even if they had three teachers, it's not a bad thing. You know, a little bit different experience from everybody, especially if you're doing a co-teaching model. They're going to have two teachers anyway in one classroom, so, I don't know. But great job.
Anybody else? Matt, thank you. Thank you to the staff for coming and supporting it tonight. I know you guys are, the school year's over, so I appreciate it.
So if you don't mind me taking the moment because the camera's here. To publicly thank Mr. Matt Howard, who accompanied grade eight on their field trip to Philadelphia. And Matt did the job that Matt is trained to do. But as far as a parent, a volunteer nurse on a field trip went above and beyond. So I just want to make sure that as many people here thank you to Matt as possible.
Great. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reporter, Director of Technology Services. Rich, you can stay there if you want. Do you need any help?
If I fall down, you can kick me out.
I know, right? Did this happen here?
All right. All right. Talk a little bit about technology. Thanks to the committee for a little bit of time to discuss. There are two items on my agenda. The first one is the technology audit. So we'll start with that. The technology audit is something that I don't think a lot of school districts have really jumped on board with yet, although I do start to feel a little bit of emotion from other school districts about it. And what that is, is we secured the services of a third party. The name of the company is called Foresight. And that company came in, spent a couple of days with me to go over the practices that we have in place in the district, particularly related to cybersecurity. And the reason to have them come in is to give us ideas of what we could do or need to do to make sure that we're as secure as we can be. At this point, I have not received the report from the company. It was just a week and a half ago, I spent those days with them. But in talking with them while they were there, you know, obviously I got some ideas of things that we need to fix. So I figured I would describe some of that information here to. fix, so I figured I would describe some of that information here tonight. The first thing to say is that as far as they're concerned, our external security is quite good. And what that means is if there was someone outside of the district who was trying to get into the district to steal data or pass viruses or things like that, they were pretty happy with the level of security that we have there. With that said, we are not Microsoft or Google, so the reality is if a Chinese government hacker wanted to hack the out of the public schools, they probably would be able to do so. So, you know, in full disclosure, I just wanted to say that while we do our good job keeping people out, auditor was happy with what we've done. You know, there is a certain level that when you're, if you don't have an unlimited budget, you don't have the greatest firewall, the greatest protection. You know, companies, large companies have entire security teams that work 24 hours a day making sure they're secure. So, the feedback from that auditor makes me feel good about what we're doing, but again, full disclosure, we're probably not completely impenetrable. The internal side of things is a place where we need to do a little bit more work. And so, some of the things that were described were some older systems that we have that are more light and susceptible to attack. The good news is we were already in the process of moving those things out, so this summer, those older systems should be removed. We need to do a better job with our password policies, which means, you know, password complexity, requiring people to change their passwords after a certain amount of time. So, those are suggestions received from the auditor that we've already started to take action on, updating machines, things like that, that we need to do and we were doing, but we just, you know, now we're going to have a roadmap of the things that we really need to hit. And so, the plan, when I get the final report, is to go through it, find the critical items that really need to get fixed, and then again, use that as a roadmap to really sort of fix any of the things that stand out to the auditor to be prepared. Another thing to note is, in the vein of starting to get some momentum in school districts, is the state actually has created a grant to help school districts train, school districts and municipalities actually, to train staff on better cybersecurity. So, we did apply for that grant. There hasn't been an answer yet, but I figured I would mention that as well. So, the hope is we can get that, and then that will secure additional funding for us to be able to do some training with the staff on how to find efficient email or, you know, don't click on the virus links and things like that. That's kind of the headline about the technology audit part of the agenda. Do you have any questions on that?
Will we receive a copy of the report once it comes in, or at least what you're doing to fix some of the issues?
So, I thought about that a little bit today, and so, I have never seen a report like this before, so I don't know what's in it. And so, I don't know if it could be made public, just because there's probably some things in that document that we don't want other people to see. But once I see the document, I get an idea of what's in there, I can certainly share some more information. I just am not sure what's in there yet.
That's fine. You know me, I'm all about keeping secrets.
I'll try, but there are some things.
If I could just, you know, Rich was the mastermind behind the purchase of a lot of technology, and as a part of the building project, we were able to do this audit because we've had such an expenditure on technology. This is our chance to really do it as a part of the building project because this wasn't a budget item, and that's why schools don't do it, because they're expensive and extensive audits, so. Thank you.
I'm happy that we got the chance because again, it gives us a picture. I am not a cybersecurity expert. I'm an IT guy, and so, there are so many parts of IT that's one we're not particularly strong. And so, having that outside person come look at it is going to be a huge help for us.
Great.
So, the second part is the Technology Strategic Action Plan. It is six hundred and seventy pages. And so, what I did want to do is really highlight the fourth parts, the differences. You know, this is kind of the document that goes from year to year, but I wanted to point out some of the things that have changed for this year. So, on page one, in the first section, the new technology research section, obviously this is the year one of our seven through 12, one-to-one computer deployment. So, we went through that first year. A little more feedback on that as we go further, but I, you know, I think as a district, we'd be happy with the successes that we've had with that. And with adding all of those machines, that has really gotten us to a point where even below grade seven, there's a computer, at least one computer for every two students. It might actually be a little bit better than that, but just to be safe, left it at two to one. But I think that's, you know, great to be better, but it's, we're getting to a great spot where instead of waiting two weeks to get a computer card, you may have to wait a couple periods for the computer card. So, that's something that's a huge improvement over the past years. Section two, obviously, is the same thing. We've done the one-to-one. We've had ongoing staff meetings regarding the one-to-one that include teachers from grade five all the way up to 12, included five and six because they're in the same building and they have much accessibility now to laptops, so we wanted them to be involved. And as, you know, this kind of progresses, I think they'll jump more and more on board with some of the technology things that are happening above them. The one-to-one laptop initiative really ties directly in with Canvas as well. Those two things really go hand in hand. You can't talk about one without the other for the most part. And so, Canvas is available all the way from five up to 12 now, so the teachers in fifth and sixth grade have jumped on. They're not giving assessments in Canvas like maybe is happening in 12th grade, but they are using it to allow the kids to see where their homework is and have everything in one place, and so, we expect that to keep growing, and that's been really well, really great, like across the board from five all the way to 12. The Canvas adoption has been fantastic. We've actually met with students, we met with them once this year as well. Canvas is part of one of those meetings, and the feedback that we received from those students was great. I just had a couple of bullet points that I didn't include on the sheet, but I looked them over today. The students are happier with their devices because it makes it easier to do their work. It allows them to do a lot more interactive online assignments than before simply because there's just more accessibility. At any given time, every student has a device. It's not, well, we have to book the computer lab, fifth period, and then we have to wait four days for the fifth period again so we can finish that assignment, you know? They can really do a lot more now that they've got a device in their hands pretty much all the time. One thing that I, that came up that I thought was interesting was the ability to access their work even if they're absent, and to access their work even if their teacher is absent. I didn't really think about that, but, you know, when the teachers are putting all their work into Canvas, the kids know, you know, I can keep following on, I can keep doing the things that I need to do because it's all in Canvas, it's all online. So, I thought that was interesting feedback because students were happy with that. It wasn't like, okay, you know, the substitute's trying to help us, but the substitute's not necessarily versed in what we're doing. Now, it's all, again, they can continue working with some help from that substitute on those days. One thing that the students suggested as well was trying to standardize Canvas courses a little bit. So, this past year, we deal a lot of PD with the staff, and we sort of let the staff kind of run with it. And so, what we're trying to do now is figure out the best way to do things and then continue driving that PD home with the staff. The feedback, you know, standardizing things was maybe in my class, they get their assignments on this tab, and someone else's class, they go to another place, so maybe we need to figure out a way to sort of make it standard so that kids don't get confused between their classes. They love the fact that they're going to one place now. Instead of going to Rich's website for a class and Peter's website for a class, they're going to Canvas and everything is there, but now we need to kind of fine-tune it. So, that's the end of page one. Canvas is a big software addition. This is in the second section. And then, the other thing that I wanted to highlight was the learning.com digital literacy program. We added that for grades one through four, and that program is just a way to teach those younger kids a little bit more digital literacy, whether it's being safe online, even keyboarding and things like that. It was a sort of a case program where the curriculum was there and the kids could follow along and do this. We may have to create something on our own, but it gives those kids a chance to get a little bit more adept with using the computers. Kids that age really are adept at using touchscreens, but they're not at using a mouse and using the keyboard, so that targeted instruction is going to be helpful. You know, when they get to third grade, they're going to take their tests on the computer, so having a little bit more knowledge and understanding of how that computer works is going to be huge. So, that's been a nice addition. On page three, the high school program studies has added quite a few classes. That group has grown quite a bit, so you can see the list. There are now seven classes offered at the high school. That really has almost nothing to do with me, but I do think it's a good thing to bring out there is that we're offering more educational opportunities for the IT field or for the programming field for the students. And, you know, that gets me excited. When I was in high school, that wasn't even an option. Page four is another huge, really kind of comes out in the next pages, but in the first section, we did have an entire professional development day based on technology. We'll continue that. We are sharing it a little bit with social emotional learning this year, but we're going to keep driving this, the technology train. We're going to keep working on Canvas and then as much tech integration as we can get. The last bullet point in group one, we have group and one-on-one training provided by the technology integration specialists. So, if the one-to-one was like the number one thing that we did in the technology department, the technology integration specialist is like 1A. We hired an integration specialist. Her name is Vicki Graham. She's been fantastic this year. She's really allowed us to get more integration in the classroom. She's in classrooms, she's working with teachers, she's doing group training. Her job is to help integration, so we didn't have that before. It fell to our technology liaisons who are also generally teaching classes, so that makes it harder on them, or it fell to our department where we're trying to take care of the technology and also do that integration. So, now having that one person focused on that has been a huge benefit for our department and for our district as a whole. So, if we move to page five, that's where we actually have the, she was hired, so that's a big deal. That's the first section. And then, in the third section added, again, she's done a great job. She schedules herself a few days here in the large building, and then she schedules a day at Woodsdale and a day at Beaverbrook, and that information is relayed well in advance so that the teachers know when they're going around, and she also will schedule things through our ticketing system. So, if someone needs help, they just point a ticket, and then she schedules out with them because obviously, teachers plan, you know, days are different on any given day, so it has to, you can't just say, "I'll be there at nine o'clock in the morning" because the teacher might be teaching. So, she's done a great job sort of scheduling all that out and hitting as many people as she can. We've hit page six. Page six doesn't have any updates, so we go to the next page. And then, page seven is the last page. So, in the first section, annual review of the district's current technology status. So, the first, the middle bullet points there are relative to our online testing. And so, this year, we tested grades three through 10, everybody online. So, at this point, I think we've hit that goal, we can do that. And we did, there were hundreds of kids testing at any given time. Kids at Woodsdale, kids at the middle school, kids at the high school. So, you know, the network didn't catch on fire. The kids were able to take their exams, and of course, there are little things here and there with someone's individual computer, but the system as a whole, we're ready to go. And I'm happy that we were able to do that because it's, you know, a couple of the tests are still on paper, but before long, everything will be online. So, you need to have that infrastructure and those devices in place so that we can do that, and we've gotten to that point. So, that is the rundown of the strategic action plan for me. And for any questions, I'll just have to answer them.
Mine is more of a comment than a question, but just as we move towards doing more with the online platform with Canvas, having assignments online and students moving away from pocket agendas, keeping track of their assignments in a notebook that they keep and maintain. I'm just always a little worried about the life skills that we teach that aren't really part of the curriculum, so just more of something through experience and, and like I said, more of a, just something that we could keep in mind to maintain that teaching of accountability and responsibility on the kid's part. So, for example, if a teacher puts assignments on the board, if teachers put all of their assignments, if as a district, we're moving towards requiring them to do more and more on Canvas, and posting the daily homework, for example, by a certain time, by 4:00 p.m. or 5:00 p.m., becomes something that teachers are expected to do. I just, I'm wondering what as a district would be our policy, our belief for if a teacher changes that homework on the fly and clearly states it to the students and puts it on the board or mentions it to them in class, but doesn't modify it on Canvas, and still expecting that the students have that accountability and responsibility to get the assignments in even if Canvas doesn't say it. So, just little things. And then, always worrying about cheating. I know it's so much easier when everything is online in many ways, and then...
I can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah.
We purchased something called Lockdown Browser.
Awesome.
Which allows us to, if assessments are given in Canvas, the assessments open up in a different window that the kids can't get out with. So, they can't go to Google and try and figure out what the answer is, and they can't take screenshots, and they can't copy and paste. So, that's a way that, that was feedback that the teacher said, like, "I can give an assessment on Canvas, but there's no way for me to know if the kids are cheating or not, whether they're copying and sharing it with their friends later." So, we have that system in place so that...
And do we have TurnItIn?
Cam has not even said yes, so that must be true.
No one has really pushed for it, to be honest with you.
TurnItIn, if that's something that we could maybe look at getting, that would definitely be helpful for so many things. And just in general, I'm just wondering if, you know, I'm sure, the more time we have with the one-to-one initiative as the kids have it for more and more years, there'll be little things that, not necessarily through Canvas, but just different activities. We do have, is it Land School? Do we use Land School? Is that...
We have a little bit of Land Schools spread out there. We haven't really opened it for everybody yet. It's interesting that when the kids are moving, it's easy to set up Land School. Land School is a system where you can watch what's happening on the screens that are in front of you, and it's easy to set up with computer labs. It's not so easy when I'm moving from room to room to room to room, and so, we've been looking at how we can set that up, but we did not have it in place forever this year.
Okay. And then, I know this has nothing to do with Canvas per se and issues with technology, but just continuing to encourage teachers to get their grades up as often as possible that, with the accessibility and parents on it, and then seeing gaping holes where some teachers put up all of their assignments pretty quickly and some teachers wait weeks or months, and getting that immediate feedback is so important. Great. This is awesome.
I just had a question. The one-to-one laptops, did you find that it went as expected, better than expected? You know, I remember sitting, I don't know, I think I was probably in the audience as people were, there were a lot of worries. You know, you think through all of the things that could go wrong, or, you know, how did it, now that we're on the other side, how did that feel or...
I mean, I think it probably went better than expected. There's obviously a lot of anxiety about rolling out something like this, but I think Mr. McCarty said it in his group during his speech, like, the staff are really wrong with it, and that's happened for the whole district, not just the middle school. And I think most people have really grabbed onto it, and they understand the benefits for the students, and the students, all the feedback I've received from the students has been great. I won't say it's been perfect. We've had, you know, some damaged laptops, and we've had issues on that end that I wish hadn't happened, but overall, you know, there hasn't really been like a major issue, which is great.
It's fun to see the middle schoolers walk to school, like, in the morning when I'm driving to school myself, like, with the laptop bag with the A. Like, it's just, you know, kind of, it's a really nice thing that we do. And then, the other thing I said was a comment. You mentioned Mrs. Graham and the addition of her position, but prior to that, you were really a one-man show, and some of your report I can barely hang on to, like, technology's not my forte, but I know it's like an immense amount of work and that we don't necessarily hear your name enough for the amount of work that you do for us, and I just want you to know that I probably speak for all of us when I say we're so glad that you're here and appreciate all that you're doing behind the scenes that you have your hands in and on all the time.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Anybody else? Thanks, Rich.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get better.
Also, they have calendars on Canvas, so like, something does change, you can put like, you can put notes on your calendar and stuff, like upcoming events. I was pretty helpful. If they're going to use it, that was pretty helpful.
We're going to move on to our report of the subcommittees, uh, Business and Finance Subcommittee, myself and Lisa. This came up based on, I want to say it was, it wasn't the High School Improvement Plan. Was it the Improvement Plan? Okay. Last month, then we, we tabled the fee discussion part of it until this month essentially. Um, Lisa, you can take it too. Lisa and I met with, um, Peter to go over, um, actually individually, we had, we couldn't meet, we couldn't just find a time to meet. So individually, he talked to each of us about, um, the different aspects of it. I don't know if you want, do you want to hit on anything in there?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that the school, the, um, Dr. Sullivan had proposed in the school improvement plan was possibly looking at like eliminating, um, the fee for if you did a third, did a third sport. So we looked at that and the amount of money that it would cost to do something like that was like, was like either $10,000.
It was like fifteen, yeah, fifteen thousand dollars.
It was too much money of, for a loss. So we were trying to come up with a way to maybe look at this issue and maybe accommodate it somewhat. So what we kind of came up with is if there was an athlete that did three sports, that maybe we would cap, we would cap it at $500. And we looked at some other districts and what, what the, um, what they were doing. So if, if an athlete in Abington at this time, if they did three sports, they would have the cost of $525. So we were looking to cap it at $500, um, which would be a reduction of $25 if there was a third, a third sport in hopes that maybe it might get a student to maybe try a third sport. Or even if there's multiples, you know, kids in a family that do three sports, it, you know, would help save a little bit of money.
Based on...
The cost, like there was, this past year, there was a three-sport athlete, there was only 86 kids that were three-sport athletes. So if we reduced it by $25, 86 times 25 would only be, um, a loss of $2,000, which is something more manageable than the 10 or the 15,000 if we did it other way. So that's how we kind of came up with that after lots of discussion.
Yes. So then that, we had that and then the, the co-curricular part of it, um, waiving it all would have been a $5,000 hit to the budget, which we felt might have been too much. So what we've come up with is, and I think we talked about this at the time, that we don't want kids to have to pay to be, to run a blood drive, things like that. And it just kind of, it just kind of, those kinds of things just kind of got lumped into everything else as we went. So what we kind of talked about is, um, what we're looking to do is waive for, if I get this wording wrong, please let me know. But, um, waive for like school community service group type of projects. So if that's the only thing somebody's going to do, we're not going to have them pay a fee to run something like that.
Like the anti-bullying club or like any of those type of...
So that's kind of...
Do you feel like it's really clear and easy to, to identify what those?
I'm going to leave that up to the administration to identify exactly which ones would fall into that category.
It would be in the handbook.
Well, we, yes. Um, the reason we wanted to, I suggested to propose it this way is every year, you know, these things change. And that way you have a policy and we have to adhere, we have, we have to put that policy in place. So if it's a school service, um, organization, they wouldn't pay. If it was gaming club, they would pay. And they're pretty black and white like that and clear. Um, so, uh, the anti-bullying club, you know, you wouldn't pay. So.
So that's kind of what we came up with when we discussed. I don't know if anybody else have any questions on it? So I'm going to take them separately. So the first, I'd be looking for a motion to waive the co-curricular fee for school service organizations. Um, I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second would be a motion to provide a $500 per student annual athletic fee cap, which would in turn reduce it by $25 for anybody who does three sports during a year. So I'd be looking for a motion on that as well.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Thank you. Um, moving on, Social Emotional Learning Subcommittee, Lisa and Jackie.
I think Mr. Robbins is taking this one, right? We've been meeting regularly and he has a lot of good information for us. Yes.
And James, before you start, I just want to mention, I know you're kind of wrapping up, much like Jack mentioned, your first year, kind of wrapping up. So I know there's been a lot of transition. I want to thank you for everything, uh, taking to Abington, learning how we're doing things and looking to move forward going. I just want to mention that. Congratulations on a first school year wrapping up. Um, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It's been a pleasure and I've learned a lot from you and, um, I think, um, the way you function as a committee does a lot to move, um, the district forward and, you know, um, keep up with, um, current evolutions in the field. So, um, just thanks for being able to be a part of it all. Um, so what I'm here to talk about is the, uh, school accessibility survey that, um, first and foremost, I should just, um, point out was kind of a mandatory process for us. And this is because when Desi came in, um, a year ago, they evaluated all of our practices and said, okay, one thing we'd like your district to, um, to do more of is, um, is self-evaluation. And how you evaluate is up to you. And then the tools you use is up to your district too. But we just want to see more evidence that you're doing it. So, um, so it was on me to just sort of develop a, um, some way for us to, um, to evaluate our progress as a district. Um, but, um, through collaborating with the Social Emotional Learning Sub, Sub, um, Subcommittee, I realized that, okay, what we should really evaluate are the skills, um, are the areas that are known to develop social emotional competency among children. So, um, so we did, um, surveys that parents participated in, staff members participated in, and students participated in. And I'll give you the details in a minute as to how many students participated and so on. But first I just want to point out the main, um, themes that we, um, that we included in our survey, which was we wanted to know how we were doing in terms of teacher-student relationships, how we're doing in terms of parent-teacher relationships, how we're doing in terms of meeting students' diverse needs, how we're doing in terms of recognizing and responding to bullying, um, how well we're managing students' mental health needs and our cultural responsiveness. So these were, these were themes that were embedded in all three versions of the surveys that we did. So like I said, uh, we got participation from students, parents, and teaching staff. And how we kind of got word out about it was we talked about it at the school committee meetings. Um, we advertised it on the website and we sent out all staff emails. Uh, we had our students participate in, uh, wellness and phys ed classes. And, um, as I'll point out in a minute when I go through the numbers, I would say, I would say the, uh, survey participation was robust. And we can see these overall themes is generally reflective of our community. But like any survey, it has limitations. Because we got, while we got, um, good turnout, it's not, not all members of our community participated. So there's a bit of inference with this, but that's true of any survey. I should also point out too, that this survey wasn't sort of scientifically devised as, as some surveys are that, uh, that are used in, you know, research projects and things like that. This was something that we, we developed in-house. So of course there are natural limitations to the survey, but more than anything, what we're looking for is to just, is to just look for some of the themes of what parents are thinking and some of the themes of what students are thinking and some of the themes of what teachers are thinking. So, um, um, so overall, we had 266 high school students participate in the survey, 65 middle school students participate, a total of 83 teachers and 219 parents. And so what I'll do now is just kind of share the insights at first from the students, then I'll go, um, teach editors and then parents. That could be reversed. We'll see. So, um, so what's really nice is while I divided, basically how the high school students responded and how the middle school students responded was very consistent. It, um, so the themes, the themes seem to me to be kind of true of reality, to the extent that you can say that from a survey. Um, so what, what is nice is the overwhelming majority of students reported positive relationships with their teachers. Um, most of our students feel that they have at least, you know, one adult to confide in, in the building, that they generally feel accepted and encouraged and respected by their teachers, um, which is great. Um, we all, we also heard from the high school students that most of them feel that our, our school is welcoming to diversity. And, uh, they feel that because they feel that topics related to diversity are discussed in classrooms, um, and that students from diverse backgrounds are also welcomed in the community. Um, with, with respect to bullying, we found that the majority of students have not experienced bullying in the past year. With that said, what we learned, and this was, this was surprising to us, is that 18.5% of survey students reported some degree of bullying during the past full year. With that said, most students report that they knew the appropriate staff member to contact if they were, if they were bullying. Um, so, uh, so with this information, we know that we can take some, uh, that this is an area that we can do some more planning on and some more responding. We're also very concerned about just sort of the emotional wellbeing of our students. Um, so we learned through the survey that 60% of participants reported that anxiety has some degree of impact on their academic performance. Also, 87% of students reported that they experienced excessive stress at times due to academic responsibilities. Um, the good news in this is that the majority of students said that they have some degree of knowledge related to coping skills. Um, so we know that anxiety and excessive stress are just a part of life. And just as we probably would have guessed, we know that it's a part of academic life too. It's good news that a lot of students have some, uh, knowledge of coping skills. Um, but just given this data, we know that probably we want to do some more work in terms of imparting knowledge of coping skills and just managing, uh, their emotions throughout the day. So now the results from the middle school students. Um, and again, the themes are really similar from the middle, with the middle school students and high school students. But when it came to middle school students, most students reported very positive, um, relationships with their teachers. They felt like they had an adult to confide in, they felt encouraged in their classrooms, and they felt respected. It was great. Um, al-also students at the middle grade, uh, middle school level felt that the school was welcoming to diversity in terms of diversity issues are openly discussed in classes. And just, um, students and teachers are welcoming of students from diverse backgrounds. At the middle school, also the majority of students have not experienced bullying during the past year. With that said, 21.6% of students reported some form of bullying during the previous year. Like the high school students, the middle school students also knew who to contact if they were bullying. In terms of the emotional life of our middle school students, um, 53% reported that anxiety had some degree of impact on their academic performance. And 82.9% reported that they experienced excessive stress at times due to academic responsibilities. But like the high school students, a majority reported some degree of knowledge related to coping skills. So we know that, um, some intense emotionality is present in our student population. We also know that there's some knowledge of how to manage that emotional life. And this is just an area that we're putting a lot of time and attention to. So, you know, were a survey like this issued a year from now, two years from now, we would hope the results would be, you know, even more encouraging in terms of awareness of coping skills and hopefully decrease in terms of the anxiety and excessive stress. Or should I question? So, um, now I'm just turning to the insights that we got from the teaching staff. And what was really remarkable, and this is true of the surveys as a whole, is that teaching staff from all buildings participated in these surveys, but the results were just really consistent. Um, so in terms of the overall, overall, uh, themes across teaching, across teaching staff, regardless of what building they were in, most teachers reported that, uh, the students felt comfortable confiding in them during challenging times. Also, um, students feel like, um, they have the information they need to meet diverse student needs. They feel like they have sufficient knowledge about students' unique learning needs. Um, in terms of, uh, relationships with parents, teaching staff, um, report, the majority of teaching staff report that parents are effective partners and respond to students' problems. And report that parents are encouraged to participate in school events. Uh, when it came to bullying, um, uh, many, uh, most teaching staff did report that bullying had been, uh, reported to them at some point during the past full year. Um, with that said, the teaching staff, uh, feel that administration is effective in responding to bullying. When it came to, uh, emotional management, both, uh, teachers who participated in the survey had a student where that student's experience of anxiety, anger, depression interfered with their academic experience. And most teachers who participated in the survey said that they, they, in one way or another, proactively addressed emotional management in terms of, um, teaching students how they should deal with, um, deal with stress in their class or, or deal with anger or things like that. When it comes to cultural response to this, the teaching staff, um, report that they feel comfortable discussing diversity issues, you know, such as race, sexual orientation, and gender. And that they make sure that their curriculum is culturally relevant and free of bias. And then when it came to insights from the parents who participated in the survey, um, most of the parents reported that they are regularly updated on student progress. They feel their input is invited on how children learn best and they're encouraged to take part in school community activities. When we asked parents, um, how they perceived the relationships were between students and teachers, most parents reported that, um, the teachers have a productive understanding of their child and that their child has a trusted adult in the building who they can confide in. When it came to bullying, at each level, parents reported that there were some instances of bullying, um, that they're aware of. When it came to emotional management, um, uh, at all, at all levels, um, there were parents who reported that anxiety interfered with their, uh, child's academic performance. And that their children had at times experienced excessive stress due to academic responsibilities. And then when it came to cultural responsiveness, um, most parents reported that our schools, um, promote cultural appreciation, are a proactive and engaging parents of diverse backgrounds. And their, uh, uh, children's cultural backgrounds are reflected in their coursework. Um, so there are a lot of positives that came from this survey, um, uh, which, which is the good news. And then we also just, um, were made aware of a few issues that we need to work on in terms of future planning. Um, we know that the, that there were just, uh, several reports of the occurrence of bullying happening at all levels. And so while we already take some steps to prevent bullying, and we also know that our, our reactive work in terms of bullying is solid in terms of that we got policies at all building levels, that staff members report that administration is competent in responding to bullying, um, an area that we can grow is really in terms of our proactive work surrounding bullying. And so Desi maintains a database of evidence-based, um, preventative bullying curriculum. And, um, something we can do kind of in the year ahead is, you know, as administrators look into some of that curriculum and see if there's anything that we're, we'd be interested in rolling out. And also just, we're hearing from parents, teachers, and students that anxiety is having an impact on school performance and that we are seeing instances of significant stress. Um, so we just need to be, um, kind of proactive in trying to, uh, reduce student anxiety and stress. And so what I'm going to do right now is just show us a quick map of, of all the work we're doing to just, um, help with emotional management and respond to emotional crises. And then talk about some of the additional work we'll be doing next year to, to firm up our processes. All right. So I think you have this in the packet, so I won't go through, um, each item. Um, but as Laura had mentioned earlier, one of the things that we're doing at the preschool level is that we've purchased Second Step. And all of our classrooms will be rolling out, um, that curriculum.
We can see it.
Yeah, we all have it. Don't worry about it.
You've got it for me. Um, so really just kind of what I want to, um, just share are some of the, the new things that we're doing next year in terms of mental health responsiveness. So like I said, Second Step will be rolled out at the preschool level. Um, at, at Beaverbrook, Chris Bossa, our new principal, has a bunch of ideas and things that he would like to do coming here. Um, some of it, some of it is just making sure that each classroom has a productive, um, break space or, or calm space. And also, um, we just want to make sure that, um, all, all teachers in the building have access to zones of regulation materials and the language since it's used at the preschool as well as the Woodsdale. Also next year, um, Beaverbrook will be getting social, a social work intern, um, three days a week, which will just allow for that social work intern to go into classes and do some group lessons on, um, on dealing with issues such as bullying or dealing with issues such as, um, you know, um, grieving over a loss or things like that. Um, and we'll also have a school psychology intern there, um, one day a week as well. So there'll just be a lot more hands on deck in terms of, um, providing counseling for kids and going into classrooms to, to do social emotional lessons. Additionally, the, um, the Beaverbrook will be opening a new sub, separate classroom next year. And that population's, um, primary challenges are social, emotional, and behavioral. Um, at Woodsdale, um, um, they're going to continue, continuing to be doing a lot of work in terms of their monthly, um, character, um, meetings. And they'll also have a school psychology intern, one day a week, who will provide just more counseling, um, and more in-class support for social emotional learning. At the, and at the secondary level, so middle school and high school, um, their developments are, are both the same, so I'll speak to them altogether. But they'll, um, both have access to a school psychology intern next year, who again will be able to work directly with kids and push into classes to offer some group instruction. And they'll, and we're also hiring a shared school adjustment counselor, um, who will spend two and a half days at the middle school and two and a half days at the high school. And this will just make it so that, um, anytime there's a, a crisis should come up with a student, it's likely we'll have someone who can really... likely we'll have someone who can really work with that student. Or when a teacher notices that a student is struggling in their classes, it's just another person who will be available to consult that teacher. So can I answer any questions? About anything that I could...
James, I have one comment and one question. The comment I want to say, and I think it even said "sempitulate," but I was glad to see that the students that were surveyed were middle school and high school. I think sometimes when you get too low into elementary school, you can have kids just having a bad minute and get skewed results, so I was glad to see that. The question I had was, there was a lot of hitting on bullying throughout the entire presentation, and I know this is semantics and I've been guilty of it as well, but in the survey, did it provide the actual definition of bullying? Because I know some of us could think getting picked on for like a minute could be considered bullying, and a parent or a student can definitely think that. Not so much the staff, but for the students and the parents that took the survey, were they able to see the actual, let's say, district or the definition of what we consider bullying?
No, they weren't.
Okay.
And I would say that was one limitation of the survey. So if we were doing something that was really to inform like scientific research, you would want to make sure that all your participants were using a shared definition. This is one where the definition was truly just in the mind of the person doing the survey. So that was also a limitation when it came to say like the cultural responsiveness piece and all those things, that people could be responding with different understandings.
Yeah, I just know there's a policy in place to deal with actual defined bullying, whereas if it doesn't meet that, then it can be up to a building administrator however they see fit, so.
Right, right. And so where I would say the value of the survey with respect to bullying is because you're right. Say we were going to take, undertake a massive initiative as a result of these, as a result of this input, what we'd want to do is probably hit back and use a more precise definition, but really what the survey was trying to do is just get at kind of broad themes. So we know that in the minds of the participants, mistreatment by others is a concern. And so the question is, does it technically meet the definition of bullying? Maybe not, but what we know is that just throughout our community, we just want to focus on, you know, responding to mistreatment.
Yeah, I don't want to sound, and I don't want to come off sounding the wrong way either. It's more looking at it from one perspective and another, because bullying can carry a large, I mean, the news, you know what I mean? So I just want, and trust me, I know they feel something, so I don't want to minimize how anybody might have felt, but it was more just trying to know if it fell under that category or not necessarily, so that's all.
Right, right. And so what it does for us, just as a staff and as administrators, like, okay, you know, let's continue the conversation in terms of bullying, because that was very much a very prominent conversation over the past, you know, five to 10 years in schools. And Abington's done a whole bunch in terms of having like watertight policies and things like that. But there continues to be research in terms of preventative bullying work. So when we see results like this, this is, okay, you know, maybe as a teacher, we can look into some of these to make sure that we're doing absolutely everything we can to respond.
No, perfect, great, thank you very much.
I appreciate your question.
The only thing that, I love this map you made, the only thing not on here that I think we did talk about in our subcommittee is at the middle school. As the theme of anxiety came up, you know, over and over again, we talked about the idea of as we work on transitions from schools and that ramp that we keep talking about of creating this, you know, transition from school to school, that something like the all-school meeting for incoming fifth graders. Not that sixth, seventh, and eighth doesn't need them, but the fifth grade particularly, we talked about like sitting that whole class down and saying something like, we're going to do a whole school meeting on how do you find a seat in the cafeteria where now you don't sit with your class anymore? And you know what happens sometimes? You might go sit down and someone says table's full. What do you do? Or you may sit at the same table all year and suddenly students at that table are doing something that makes you feel uncomfortable. How do you take a different seat in the cafeteria without upsetting your peers? What if I can't get my locker open and I'm too embarrassed to tell somebody? What if I've forgotten my homework and I'm comfortable with my homeroom teacher, but I'm a little, I don't see my science and social studies teacher as often, and I don't necessarily feel as comfortable telling him or her that I don't have my science homework? So just that, and I know we talked about that at length, and I think it was just, we looked at this and it might have just been like an oversight on here, but just the idea of considering what else can we do to reduce anxiety, particularly for students who leave Woodsdale and enter this big building. We don't want to make any assumptions that they know as much as the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, because I know for like just my own, and Danielle'll jump in, but like, you know, this building for fifth grade, how they're leaving fifth grade, Deidra, is a lot different than how they entered. They are a lot more confident, a lot more comfortable. We could have used a little bit of a booster class upon entry on just some life skills, on adjusting to a big building with some big people.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, and you saw when Matt was up here too, that like the social emotional life of the students is one of his priorities, so I'm sure he would be open to that.
Yeah, just finding a way to really gather as a group, because I think if you wait for them to come up individually, you're missing that population of kids who are having the same issue but aren't talking about it. So just, I think that's really something that's working at Woodsdale is to talk broadly to an audience about a certain topic each month even, and maybe not for the whole year, but for the first half of the transition or something, just to get everybody acclimated.
Right, yeah, yeah, and as I pointed out, just in terms of new supports that'll be directed at middle school next year, is that we'll have two additional bodies in terms of the school adjustment counselor and a school psychology intern. And a school psychology intern, by the way, is at the tail end of their studies. It's like a doctor's residency, so they've learned the whole body knowledge, they just need that time implementing it. So you've got two, you know, highly skilled people will be around to, you know, sort of help in most sorts of conversations. So I'd say the middle school is well-suited for something like that next year.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
Up next is our evaluation of superintendent of schools. Thank you all for getting it to me by what I asked, I appreciate it. I think it's my third time doing this, so I kind of stuck with the same processes I have. I put all the answers into the template that Peter had, but I kind of did a summary, one page for each of his three goals. I'll just hit on them really quick. I may or may not read them all, depending on how it's going. So goal one was promote student engagement in the classroom by increasing the capacity of teachers and student-centered pedagogical practices that serve all students to improve academic achievement. There was four of us that voted on target and one was needing further action. Some of the comments, school to home updates continue to be informative with improved structure. Encouraged to seek increased use in Canvas by staff, hoping the trend continues upwards. Feel staff sharing of ideas could continue to improve beyond their own grade level. There have been a lot of actionable steps taken to achieve this goal of moving towards more student-centered pedagogical practices. It'll just be important to keep finding ways to show and tell staff what we are looking for in order to ensure that we are accountable and consistent across classrooms and grade levels as much as possible. And while a step has been taken in the right direction with regards to implementing a rotating schedule at the high school, further discussion and investigation is necessary for a better schedule in which all periods rotate. And the continuation of professional development to ensure that all staff are consistent with practices remains an important focus. Hitting on goal two, strategically increase the social-emotional supports, materials, and activities for our students in order to improve their wellness, resiliency, interpersonal skills, and overall success as individuals. There were five on targets. Taking good steps with implementation of both school committee, SCL subcommittee, as well as one consisting of in-district staff. There's been tremendous progress made towards this goal. This work is really appreciated and directly improves the day-to-day experiences of students in our care. Thank you for the time and attention to this important topic. Continuing to send this message and frame it for the entire district in terms of the why we are doing this will be really powerful and important to sustaining and building upon the good work that has been started. The establishment of the social-emotional committee is vital for learning and impact, and the impact this focus will have on our students and staff is valuable for our culture. It is evident that public schools, faculty, and staff care deeply about our students, and they are dedicated to making our schools and learning even better. CPAC-funded speakers have given parents and staff the opportunity to increase their knowledge of different forms as well as ways to address social-emotional learning. And just the bottom line of it, the very nature of this goal and topic is always changing. Look to continue to find ways to address the social-emotional well-being of students. Lastly, goal three, improve district and school lines of communication and transparency of expectations, policies, protocols, successes, and challenges. There were five on target. Communication has improved greatly over the last couple of years. Schools, particularly elementary, have had many building and grade-level events that encourage parent attendance and involvement. Walk-throughs and building visits can give you a good sense of the school atmosphere, hoping this will continue at the same pace next year. Communication has been timely and consistent to families in the community as well as to the committee. The increase of surveys has been a nice way to hear the input of many, even those who may not be able to attend meetings. Communication is essential to be successful, and great effort has been put forth to meet these expectations. Your presence as well as the presence of other administration during school activities, both during the school and during school day and after, shows your dedication to our schools, and it certainly does not go unnoticed. And the use of surveys communicates our priorities, and I know the community values these results and anticipate actions as a result of this feedback. So that would sum up everything. I skipped a couple of them. The full details as well as his midterm progress and his own evaluation is in the first package, as always. So Mr. Schaefer, if you'd like to add anything, feel free.
I just want to say thank you for the feedback. Thank you for the partnership in this important work. It's a dedicated group of people that make progress toward these things, and at the same time, there's so much more work to do. It makes it exciting to take on these challenges, so thank you very much.
Every comment I received was put in there. So I didn't read every comment, but every comment I received was put in there, so I don't know if anybody had anything else to add now or...
You're doing a great job, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along, the report of the director of curriculum instruction and assessment, Dr. Fedorowicz. Sherry, just like I mentioned with James, I know you took on a bunch of different roles this year, and your roles changed this past school year. Thank you for everything, for adjusting as we go and continuing to move in the right direction going forward.
Thank you. I think we made a lot of progress, and thank you everybody for all your feedback and information as well. It's been a great team to work with.
Thank you.
All right, well, happy beginning to summer, right? So I'm going to give you a point into PD or professional development that we're looking at for next year. So a lot goes into planning professional development. We think about progression from this year moving into next year, what needs we have going into next year, and then the feedback from teachers, CPDC, and administrators. We take all the information, we interlace the findings together, and outline the tentative PD for next year. And I'd say it's tentative because it's ever-changing, so to speak. So even though sometimes we have some PD that might guide us for future PD down the road, so there could be some changes, the state can come out with some new initiatives like they did last summer with the new social studies standards, or if we need to adjust some district needs with the planning, like last year we implemented the Alice midway through. So next year, I think we're pretty lucky to have some breathing room with our professional development. Past few years, we've been with the new and updated standards from the state and also focus on district initiatives with the new buildings, such as the one-to-one and instructional technology. So we keep all these things on our radars and segue into the next year. Our teacher leaders, also referred to as the CPDC team, focus areas tend to be more discipline-specific and vertically aligned. So teachers' leaders, their feedback resonated around social-emotional work, small group differentiated instruction, department-based or discipline-specific, instructional technology to develop lessons and to share work, grade transitions, so conversations between grades, and then choice PD, many of the choices which are topic-dependent. So the next four graphs shed light on teacher feedback from an anonymous survey sent out in April. The survey was out for almost a month. We sent out reminders, principals brought it up at faculty meetings, and we ended up having sixty-seven participants take the survey. The first question focused around professional development related to district-level goals. So they centered around student engagement, instructional technology, social-emotional learning. Most of our teachers were interested in student engagement and social-emotional learning. IT had a strong push in the last couple of years, so especially with the new building coming out, it was a really strong focus with instructional technology, and it's always been in the forefront. But I think as teachers become more comfortable, they still want to work on it, but now they're really interested in the student engagement and social-emotional learning. Our other category was predominantly individuals who wanted a combination of student engagement and social-emotional learning, or having that within a specific subject, so it was very, very specific. On the next slide, just to note, the graph that's in your copy is in misprint, so if you could focus on the slide up here. I can't tell if it's June already. There's been a million graphs with that, so same colors. So we were interested in how the results from the last slide looked between elementary and secondary, whether they were the same or whether they needed to change. So here are the results broken down by elementary, which is green, and secondary, which is blue. In elementary, the top choice was social-emotional learning, whereas with secondary, it was student engagement. The second main choice, elementary-supported student engagement, and secondary-supported social emotional. So there's a commonality there. IT is a continuation from the last couple of years, but there's still a lot of excitement around it, but I think teachers, like I said, are feeling a little bit more comfortable with this. So any questions so far? All right, teachers will also ask about other PD topics that they might be interested in. And basically what came up, the common themes were horizontal collaboration was very strong, so working with colleagues among grade level or discipline. So for example, between teachers between grade three, or teachers in high school math. So they wanted to work together. The second one was vertical collaboration, predominantly across grade levels or across disciplines. So for example, math in different buildings or different grade levels, so they could have conversations. Differentiated instruction also came out as the third, followed by classroom management and then others. So these were other topics might have included specific items related to IT programs or types of assessments. Again, it was broken out between elementary and secondary, just to make sure it's more targeted. So elementary tied in first place for horizontal collaboration and differentiated instruction, followed by vertical collaboration. So basically, they want to work together on differentiated instruction. Secondary opted for horizontal collaboration, followed by vertical collaboration, differentiated instruction, and classroom management, a bit lower. Any questions on these? So then this graph shows the culmination or the overlap between the feedback from teachers, our teacher leaders, CPDC, and our administrative team. The middle wheel shows where the commonalities or overlap occurred, which were social-emotional learning, differentiated instruction, student engagement, and horizontal and vertical collaboration. Now, the boxes off to the side aren't necessarily specific to each part of the wheel, but just show some secondary items that also came out of the survey. So elementary administration wants to work, continue working with the workshop strategies, which it does fall under differentiated instruction and student engagement, and also look at doing some writing workshop. Secondary administration, they're doing some follow-up with NASS, Division of Graduate. Departmental time is really vague, because obviously at the high school, middle high school level, they teach more within subjects. And then also instructional technology to develop more lessons, more than Canvas, and integrate that as well. CPDC wanted a choice menu so that teachers would have things to choose from, from a PD day, an instructional technology, and teachers and staff, some of the things they had mentioned, training, followed by collaboration time, making ready-to-use materials for the next day, small group work, and the menu. So this grid basically blimps into the proposed PD for next year that incorporates all the feedback that you saw from the previous slides. Across the top in green are the building and grade levels. On the left-hand side, you'll see all the dates of our professional development, and at the bottom is an acronym P. As you can see, the grid consists of a good mix of all focus areas with some flexibility in there as we need it. So we're starting our full day starting in August 27th with Jessica Minahan, who's a behaviorist, and her focus and her goal has been to help clinicians, teachers, and parents identify and understand the variables that cause students to act inappropriately or have behavioral challenges. So we're focusing on tools in our district. We're going to work with her and look for some tools to use for anxious or ruminating student behaviors, which ties in very closely to what James just presented on, what the subcommittee worked on in SCL. subcommittee worked on in SCL. So there's a really nice tie-in there. Elementary will continue the opening day with social emotional, and secondary will segue into technology. Pre-K on the left is predominantly for the year going to focus on social emotional or approaches to play and learning or accreditation. So approaches to play and learning are very similar and highly aligned with our social emotional learning piece. They're all in the same document by the state within the state standards. And they have basically eight focus areas that have to do with initiatives, curiosity, persistence, things like that to teach with our pre-K level. Beaver-Brook areas are on social emotional learning, differentiated instruction, and instructional strategies, workshop model, and some teacher choice. As you see across the bottom for elementary and its middle school, the last PD is usually for placement. For Woodsdale, it's very similar to Beaver-Brook. It'll have some information on writing workshop. Middle school grades five and six are similar to Beaver-Brook in Woodsdale, and seven and eight will straddle some of the SCL stuff, technology, and department-based professional development, so they can meet with the department heads and directors. Department-based PD is determined by the department heads and the directors, and it's subject-specific. So for example, art in the state of Massachusetts, they're coming out with new standards, so the directors are going to want to work with all the art teachers to look at the new standards. High school plans to focus on technology, department-based, and NIAS, vision of graduate. And again, I just want to emphasize, this is kind of a snapshot of where we're at now. Things could change in the summer. Like last year, I was saying, the state came out with the social studies standards late June when everybody was out. So we adjust as we go, but this is kind of a snapshot of what we have. And that's it. Any questions?
Just a comment. Out of all the PD that I've ever done, the most productive and useful, rewarding, was the time that I was allowed to create and reflect on and modify curriculum either alone or with my colleagues. So I love that it's out there. All of the other things, of course, are useful, but there has been nothing more valuable than the hours that we were given to sit down and dig in and create, reflect, modify, design. So I love that that's on there. And on the slide that said overlap between teachers, in that bottom right-hand quadrant, where it says the training followed by collaboration time, and then ready-to-use materials for the next day, having that product that you create, that you take and get training on something, and then have to adapt it to something that you're actually going to do is so important. That's critical, so I love seeing that. That's awesome.
And I think it's a good focus area. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah.
Something that we're going to work on this year, so they have something to use in the classroom and be able to collaborate together, so thank you.
And the teachers appreciate that time to sit down and dig in, so that's great.
I just have a question. Is this how you have typically in years past developed the PD, like by doing a survey and asking the staff what they want, and then it's developed in this way? Is this a new way, or is this how it's always been?
This is pretty much how it's always been.
Okay. So they get surveyed and asked what they want to include in their PD?
Right.
Not with this level of fidelity, right?
I'm sorry?
Not with this level of fidelity, probably.
It's, I think this year has been more so. I've always done this survey in the past, or through CPDC. They asked this year to have a little bit more of a voice in professional development than in years past, and I think with, like I was saying toward the beginning, there's a little bit more flexibility for next year, where we don't have a new building, and we're trying to move into a new building, or rolling out the Alice Active Shooter, things like that. So I think this year was a great year to, as Peter was saying, really take what we've been doing, but really dive in and really hone in and triangulate what we want to do. Because sometimes it's a little bit heavier in one area because of just the district initiatives or the state initiatives, and they, sometimes those things overrule. But I think this year, I think it's going to be, you know, more of that collaboration time and being able to work together.
I just want to say, after seeing Jessica Minihan as part of the CPAC-funded event, I think it's great you're able to get her for day one for all of the staff to be able to attend. Seeing it, I'm like, this would be great if the staff could see it, so I thought it was great that you guys were able to.
I'm going to break it out, elementary and secondary, because I think the differences are different for each. So she's going to adjust her training. We have her for today.
Okay.
Which is fantastic.
Great. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Report of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Schaefer.
I have a pretty cool one for you. We have a benefactor who wishes to remain anonymous, who wants to donate the replacement of the Frolio gymnasium floor. It's up to approximately eighty-two thousand dollars of a donation, and Felicia and I are working with them through the public procurement process to do this the right way. But we wanted to make sure that, a couple of things, people know where this money came from, because this wasn't a part of our budget. And so when they say, where'd they get that money from, now everybody knows. Someone is giving it to us, and so that's how that work is getting done.
Super generous.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you to anonymous donator.
That's incredible.
So I think you know the building is a great building. We're getting good use out of it. There's community use of that building all the time, and the more the community uses it, the longer the life, the better, the better value for the taxpayer they have in that building. And that gym is a, you know, our students in our community don't have enough gym space. So it's tremendously, and I can't tell you the last time that floor was done. I mean, it was, it's decades, decades, decades ago, so this is sorely needed, so it's appreciated.
Will it just stay, like, the floor, like, will the bleachers and the benches stay, or is it?
Just the floor.
Just the floor, so everything else?
It'll all be, it'll all be pulled up. There's a certain amount of enablement to replace boards underneath it, and it'll be put back down, painted, so no one will be in its place.
Great.
My next item is a request from the music and the art department to go to New York City. I believe that's a weekend in May, and we got this request late, just at the end. We just were able to squeeze it on. Answer any questions people might have about it, that I can?
This is the same field trip they do every year.
Yes.
Peter, I have so much a question, but it'd just be more maybe some guidance to any other teachers, staff that want to do, plan a field trip. If somebody who's part of the group can be here to answer any questions that you may necessarily not be able to answer, because it's not your trip. The fact it's New York City, it's not too big of a deal, but going forward.
We can make that effort.
Thank you. I've been looking for, if nobody has any question, I'm looking for a motion to approve the music department's field trip request in New York City from May first.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the next item I have is really just a very brief update on the assistant principal search for the, for Abington Middle School. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We had fifty-one applicants. The screening committee, I want to thank them. They interviewed fourteen people, and we're down to two finalists, and I'll be able to get back to the committee as soon as possible, let you know. Hopefully, we'll have one in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Wendy.
My pleasure.
Report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Alicia.
Thank you. All right. At the end of every fiscal year, I'll come back to the committee, and, or not every year, but most years, as we're balancing our expenses and salary at the end of the year, and because we have two pots of money, we may ask for a transfer from one to the other. And in this case, where I'm requesting two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar transfer from the expense account line to the salary account line to close out FY nineteen, and that end-of-the-year transfer is inclusive of final substitute coverage, hourly overtime, additional paraprofessional and tutor support that we've had throughout the year.
And to serve it, it's no change to the bottom line.
There's no change to the bottom line. In October or November, the committee voted the two buckets, a salary bucket and an expense bucket, and at times you have to move money between the two buckets, and this is one of those cases. It does not change any town allocation, and it's all within, we're paying all our bills and all salaries being.
Technical question for you. At one point, you had said you were looking for perhaps an up-to amount, which is not how this vote reads, so.
That is correct. I would, yeah, so because we sell one final payroll.
Okay.
If you could do the vote up to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, so it won't be over two-ten, it might be a little bit shy.
Sure. So, anybody have any questions? With that, I'll be looking for a motion to transfer up to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars from the expense account line to the salary account line, as presented by Ms. Michelle.
Can I make the motion?
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And my, I have a small school building update. We're still working with the contractor around the fields that are not in use yet. I always begin as at the south, not the wood fields, not the grass field in front of the school.
The first one you see pulling down the road, right?
Yes. So we're working with them. That hasn't been turned over yet. We're still working with the contractor around making sure that it's a suable surface for us to take over. The building project has also secured some additional bleachers that are actually being, that are on-site now and will be installed, so there'll be some flexibility around youth sports and being able to use additional bleachers on the grass fields or more at the turf field. So those are happening. And the last is that we are continuing our work, I think I mentioned it in our last meeting, around the reclaimed water system. That is the system that collects rainwater from the roof, holds it in a thirty-thousand-gallon tank, and then that's used for such items as flushing toilets. And we've had issues with that system really since it's been up and running, and there was a big meeting last week, and we are continuing to advocate for a solution not to be paid for by the school department, but by the contractors who installed the system that hasn't quite worked as designed. So that's something. Oh, the other one is the tennis courts. There's been some, if you've been on the tennis courts, there's been some cracking on one of the corners that is premature, and we're also working with our contractor and the site contractors around the cause of that. Those should not be, it's not normal wear and tear that within three years that tennis courts would have that type of cracking. So that is another piece that we're investigating, and whether it's because of the, whether the compaction wasn't correct, or whether the asphalt was the temperature correct, and I've learned a lot about tennis courts. But just know that we're also looking into those items as things that people may see around the site and think, why is that? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, just one thing while we're expressing gratitude tonight. Lisa and I were at the, on the turf field for flag football late, I'm sure, until about nine-thirty last night, and at one point, there was a beautiful sunset above the turf field, and many parents were just, you know, feeling really lucky, and people were commenting, like, this is just so beautiful here. And it just, I know this has been a long project, and none of us, well, I don't know how many were involved in the beginning, but it's something that this building and this space and the facility as a whole, in and out, is just so appreciated by this community, and thank you to everybody who has helped support and continues to support us, because it's a wonderful place to come to school and just to have in our community. So we were appreciative last night, right?
Took a great picture with the sunset and the school in the background.
Yeah, it was lovely. Yeah, made us reflect and think, wow, we're lucky to live here. Yeah.
I think it's an investment that this community will enjoy for a very long time, and we're doing our best to make sure that what was promised to us is what, as a community, what we will get.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one additional informational item?
Yeah.
Got a report for you tonight?
Yeah.
We were, it was recently requested, it, well, we've learned that we are going to, there's a request that the school committee participate in the selection of a town manager for the town of Abington. We didn't know that in time to get it on the agenda, so at some point, I may need to ask you, we just didn't know that they were going to ask us for that, for a date for us to have a meeting in the coming weeks, so we can at least have a quorum to select a member to participate in that town manager search, so.
Thank you. Next up, so new business and establishing of the next, at least, regular school committee meeting date, Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, the day before, students go back at seven PM. Is there anything else you want to hit on, or no? Some of the dates to remember, buildings, everything's closed on the Fourth of July, and then most of it deals with August. Teachers meeting on the twenty-sixth, Monday, Professional Development Day that Dr. Fadaroits went over, August twenty-seventh, and Students Return to School on the twenty-eighth, except for a pre-K kindergarten starts the day after Labor Day on Tuesday. So at this point, I'm going to ask, by a roll call vote, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing, under Section Twenty-One A, Two and Three of the Open Meeting Law, collective and non-collective bargaining, and not to return to regular session. So I will give a yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much.